Noon, everyone. Looks like we have a great crowd here tonight. That's fantastic. We are here for a Monday, February 24th Village Board meeting. As always, the meeting is streamed on YouTube and is also available on Facebook and the village's website. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gale.
Here.
Trustee McGee.
Here.
Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Thompson. President Kugler.
Here, and we have everybody present. Thank you, everybody, for making the time and coming out. Thank you to staff for coming out. We appreciate it. At this time, I'd ask everybody to rise and Clerk Saladino to lead us with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. I'd like to start by saying five years ago today, I was sworn in as village president. I've truly enjoyed the honor of being village president and enjoy all the residents that come out and spend time with us. I appreciate the board and our village staff. We do have municipal elections that start early voting on March 17th and April 1st. We do a very good job not being political up here on the dais, and that won't change. But I do want to encourage everybody to go out and vote. So again, early voting starts on March 17th, and Election Day is April 1, and all votes do count. With that, I'd like to move along to item A on our president's report, which is the proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the LaGrange Theater. And I know we have Chris Johnson from Classic Cinema who's going to say a few words, but first, I'll talk a little bit about the theater. 100 years ago, the LaGrange Theater opened its doors at 80 South LaGrange Road thereafter becoming an entertainment destination and a cultural cornerstone. The village has long recognized the theater's meeting meaning to the community, and in 2013, the village provided financial support to rehabilitate the theater and ensure its continued operation as an entertainment venue. Today, the theater is undergoing a major expansion, which will add three new auditoriums and its already broken ground, which was a little slow with Commonwealth Edison, but with everybody pushing together, it's moving. It is my honor now to read the proclamation honoring the theater. Whereas in February of 1925, the LaGrange Theater opened its doors at 80 South LaGrange Road, becoming a beloved entertainment destination and a cultural cornerstone for the village of LaGrange. And whereas the theater was designed by architect Edward Rubert and originally built and operated by the Gregory Bernisack Theater Corporation, offering silent films before transitioning into the golden era of cinema with sound. And whereas during the mid-20th century, the LaGrange Theater was operated by Balaban and Katz, later becoming part of the Plitt Theater chain. And during this time, the marquee was updated with a signature art-modern design elements which remain today. And whereas in 1949, the theater underwent an interior redesign led by Roy A. Blass, introducing stylistic elements that can still be seen there today. And whereas after decades of serving moviegoers, the theater faced potential closure, but was revitalized in 2008 when John Roth, who's here with us today, purchased the building, launching a significant renovation effort to preserve its place in our community. And whereas in 2013, the village of LaGrange provided financial support to help rehabilitate the theater, ensuring its continued operation as an entertainment venue. And whereas in 2022, the LaGrange Theater reopened under the Classic Cinemas brand, following a full renovation that introduced state-of-the-art amenities, including heated recliner seats, cooled seats, while maintaining its historic charm. And whereas in 2024, Classic Cinemas broke ground and a major expansion, set to add three new auditoriums, including two XQ premium presentation auditoriums, which will add over 60% to the theater's seating capacity when it opens in the summer of 2025. And now therefore, be it resolved that the village of LaGrange proudly recognizes the LaGrange Theater for its 100th anniversary and its enduring impact on the community. We hereby proclaim February 26, 2025, as LaGrange Theater Day, and the village of LaGrange celebrating a century of cinema, culture, and cherished memories. And so after a round of applause for John and Chris and everybody who's gone to the movies, Chris, if you could just share a few words.
[applause] I have to say that I'm very excited. We're doing a movie from every century, starting this Wednesday with The Freshman, and then we're going through the '30s with The Wizard of Oz, and then Citizen Kane, Vertigo, and Space Odyssey, all the way until we get into the 2020s. And we had to do Top Gun Maverick because that was the movie we opened with, and it just kind of seems fitting. So we're very excited about that, and this Wednesday night, we will have, in two nights, we'll have a short documentary, and we'll show, again, The Freshman. And then the following day, for those that can't, that couldn't get in on Wednesday night, we're going to have three kind of encore presentations of that. But our original intent was to actually open for Memorial Day, I think of '24, I think, or something like that, but we had a delay with ComEd that has been resolved, and so it won't be Memorial Day of this year, but it will be hopefully not too far thereafter. And we're just excited. By having the nine screens, we'll be able to offer a wider array of films and in more seats. So again, we thank you and we thank the community for all that you've done to make this happen, and we're just excited to be a part of it.
Thank you, Chris, and we will copy the proclamation for you. And moving on to other great things. Tonight, we have the oath of office for firefighter Timothy Taki, who's joined by his mother, Linda Taki. Traki, sorry, Traki with a T, T R, so Traki. On February 19th, 2025, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners approved the appointment of Timothy Traki to the position of firefighter paramedic. Mr. Traki completed his paramedic program with Ascension St. Francis, and he also holds a bachelor's science degree for Southern Illinois University. He was most recently employed with Elite Ambulance as an EMT, and will be attending the Romeoville Fire Academy in March to obtain his basic operations firefighter certification. I'd like to invite Tim up to the area to be joined by Clerk Saladino for the oath of office, and Linda, please join.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Timothy Traki.
I, Timothy Traki.
Haven't been appointed.
Haven't been appointed.
To the office of firefighter paramedic.
To the office of firefighter paramedic.
In the village of LaGrange.
In the village of LaGrange.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of firefighter paramedic.
Of firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. The week kicks off on Thursday and will continue through March 6. We're celebrating that with keeping the holiday lights on through the end of Restaurant Week. During Restaurant Week, there's much to experience through the culinary offerings available during the event, which includes specially priced menus. For more information, including participating restaurants, please visit the LaGrange Business Association's website, lgbaevents.com. Spring cleaning, it is springtime, it feels like it, at least today, outside. Looking ahead to spring, we are going to host, or have the spring cleanups will be held the week of April 14th for residents on their regular collection day. The contract with Flood Brothers requires a separate spring cleanup sticker for unlimited participation. Spring cleanup stickers will be sold at the same locations as refuse and yardway stickers. Again, for more information on the program, will be available early March, and those interested in learning more are always encouraged to visit our website. Again, we recommend that everybody that's putting on this sticker puts it on the morning of, because a lot of people come and grab the different things that, you know, one person's treasure or trash is another person's treasure. So we do encourage recycling and reusing, but we don't want them to take off with your sticker and then leave just things behind, and you don't have a sticker. So a lot of, we do recommend you put the sticker on the morning of your trash pickup. Today, we're going to be talking about the capital budget, and on Saturday, March 8th, beginning at 8:00 in the morning here in the auditorium, we're going to be talking about the normal budget workshop. All are welcome to attend the budgeting process, and there'll also be the regularly scheduled meeting due weeks from today on March 10th. Lastly, the Countryside St. Patrick's Day Parade is March 1st. All employees of the village are welcome to march. We also encourage residents, and we see Dawn in the background, she's marched with us in the past, and hopefully we'll see her out there, 1 o'clock on St. Patrick's Day in Countryside. The route is on Countryside's village's website, and right now, it looks like it's going to be warm right up to the day. So maybe we'll get lucky and the warm will last one extra day. But that's this Saturday, starting at 1 o'clock, I believe. And with that, is our manager's report.
There is. Thank you, President Kugler, and good evening, everyone. Sole item on tonight's manager's report is the fiscal year 2025-26 capital funds budget, which is a key component of the village's annual budgeting process. It accounts for substantive investments in the village's facilities, roads, sewers, and water systems. Several factors have shaped this year's proposed capital budget, including the 2024-27 strategic plan, inclusion of well-maintained and improved infrastructure as a strategic priority. Following that priority was required thoughtful consideration of services, budgeting for ongoing preventative maintenance needs, and planning for future infrastructure improvements. Efforts to continue to refine the village's budget document to improve its clarity and use as a management and communications tool has also shaped this effort. This effort has meant consolidating line items and working towards having an account of similar expenditures all in one location within the budget. Significantly, the village's $121 million long-term infrastructure capital plan factors considerably into what was proposed for not only this next year, but the following four years after that. To prepare for this undertaking, the proposed budget continues a $2.5 million transfer to the capital fund in support of current needs in anticipation of future debt service requirements. It's important to note that while the Capital Projects Fund does account for more significant capital projects, it's not an exhaustive list of projects that are anticipated to occur next year. For example, projects such as sewer lining, televising, repair, lead service line replacements, and other projects are accounted for in the water and sewer funds. Taking that into consideration, staff is pleased to present the proposed capital funds project, I'm sorry, capital projects fund for fiscal year 2025-26. Highlights of the proposed budget include $2 million in community project grant funding to rehabilitate sewers located in the village's north basin, $3.07 million for Phase 1 construction for 50th Street conveyance system and associated improvements there, $375,000 for costs associated with various improvements to the construction as part of the 47th and East Avenue infrastructure improvement undertaken by IDOT, $500,000 in community project grant funding to rehabilitate sewers located in the village's south basin, and then $200,000 in the street patching program to maintain the village's roadways. That concludes my overview, and at this point, I'd like to invite Director Mica to provide an overview of the finances of the fund.
All right. Thank you, village manager Knight. As the village manager stated, the proposed FY25-26 budget does include an annual transfer to the Capital Project Fund and $2.5 million. This transfer funds currently planned projects and the support of future capital planning. The fund also includes transfer to debt service. That transfer includes debt service payments for the $11.6 million sewer improvement bonds that were issued back in 2015. The sewer fund also includes a $2.9 million bond, which is part of the 2015 sewer improvement bonds to complete further sewer improvement projects. Looking ahead, as the village endeavors to develop a financing, a plan aimed at most effectively leveraging available resources, strategic financing options will be developed as part of the village's work with a financial consultant. Working with a financial consultant will allow the village to evaluate options and decide on a long-term financing plan, ensuring the sustainability of financing mechanisms. I'd like to invite Acting Director Davenport to provide an overview of the items included in this year's proposed capital project fund budget.
Thank you, Director Mica. Good evening, President Kugler and the Board of Trustees. The proposed capital project fund budget includes funding for the stormwater combined and sanitary sewer system, as well as the village roadway, sidewalks, and streetscape. North Basin drainage area improvements under stormwater combined and sanitary sewer systems. The first capital project fund item is a recap of last fall, North Basin draining area study presented by Christopher Burke Engineering. The plan includes refined costs, estimated flood mitigation projects, a review of feasibly through permitting agencies, MWRD, and assesses, assessments of flood reduction and benefits required, funding available, funding resources, project timing, and evaluations of interim solutions. The plan serves to inform the village of infrastructure and capital plans, and will serve to align investments in the village sewer system with the investment in streets' water system. We're doing so well, work to manage the cost and the return and the high value on the investments made. South Basin drainage area improvement. A trunk storm sewer along 50th Street from East Avenue to Stone Avenue includes laterals to five depression areas, outfalls, reconstruction aggregate, storage in the project excavation area, as well as options to deconflict and replace water main and replace lead services. As part of the five-year plan, the current estimate for the project, all options, is $22.71 million, which does not include the cost for the outfall reconstruction. Purpose, the proposed 25-26 capital project fund budget includes $3,070,000 for Phase 1 construction, which is a capital fund contribution, and will supplement existing bonds, funds in the village. Sewer and engineering for the outfall design, utility, deconflicting, new water main design, laterals designs, participating in their entry process on the plan design with the permitting agency MWRD, IDOT, are also included in the budget. Pending litigation in appellate court will impact the execution of various aspects of the project. The next project is community project funding administered through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This project consists of $500,000 in federal community project funding, and it includes a point repair and a sewer lining in the village's south basin. This includes 15 point repairs, which include reconstruction of repairs of segments of the sewer system and over 3,000 feet of sewer lining. Pause for a minute for any questions. I see no questions. I'll move on with my report. Under the roadway, sidewalk, and streetscape, we have the 50/50 sidewalk program. It's an annual program that splits the cost of public sidewalks. Repairs, funds for this program are also intended to support saw cutting and correction of trip hazards and on a all-needs basis. $70,000 is included in the fiscal year 25-26 capital project fund budget for this program. Brainerd and Shawman Avenue. This project is a multi-year and multifaceted project to replace water main and lead service lines, sewer restoration, and roadway resurfacing. The village was recently successful in securing an additional $360,000 in federal funding for the sewer lining for the restoration needs that were beyond the original project scope, which were identified during the course of conducting the work. Funding of $567,384 is included in the proposed capital fund budget for the fiscal year 25-26. Pay for the village outstanding obligations. Gilbert Avenue resurfacing. The village entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Western Springs at the beginning of the year from the design engineer and invest in Cook County Gilbert Avenue STP resurfacing project from Augn Avenue to 47. Western Springs is the lead agency on the project and currently oversees Phase 2 engineering for this project. The proposed capital fund budget for 25-26 includes $134,400 for the village proportionate share of this next phase in the project. 47th and East Avenue intersection improvements. This is an ongoing project undertaken by the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, to improve the intersections of East Avenue and 47th Street. The project includes new signalizations, roadway resurfacing, installation of improved sewers, and several additional enhancements. The village received $200,000 in a DCEO grant fund through the Illinois Department of Commerce, an economic opportunity, DCEO, to fund these intersections improvements, which an additional $175,000, $175,000 contribution by MI Homes and associate with the development of the Mason Point subdivision. The proposed 25-26 capital fund budget includes $375,000 to pay for the cost of the various improvements related to this project. Federal aid urban highway system funding. The West Central Council of Mayors administers the services and transportation of the program, STP, which includes the awarding of the federal fund for the roadway resurfacing project. Administration of the program includes a scoring mechanism to establish a prioritization of projects proposed for fund to better position the village project within the program. Phase 1 engineering is planned for projects the village will anticipate submitting to the program. Engineering costs associated with the STP program, Phase 1 engineering for the 50th Street Storm Sewer Project, underground and detention at Lyons Township High School, north campus, Gilbert Avenue, resurfacing, community project funding project through HUD. And the general engineering needs included project coordination have been included in the proposed capital project fund budget. A total of $300,087, $300,087, $853 is proposed for these costs. Pause again for anybody to have any questions. If no questions, I proceed. Lastly, general maintenance items include, in the proposed capital budget, include crack filling program, which is a preventative maintenance activity that extends the life and expectancy of the street. Identified to become part of the crack filling program are determined on an annual basis and are completed by zones each year. The proposed 25-26 budget includes $30,000 for this program. Thermal plastic street marking is restripe various thermal plastic streets. Thermal plastic street markings that are damaged or worn from vehicles, plows, and other conditions leading to the deterioration is performed to improve the visibility in the markings. The village contracts with the thermal plastic pavement marking coming through the Northwest Municipal Conference in order to take advantage of this economical scale. The proposed 25-26 budget includes $30,000 for this program. Street patching program. The village undertakes patching on a regular basis to address the defects in the roadway and to prolong the lifespan of the pavement. Both cold and hot asphalt is used in this restoring road services administration. Of the program is based on the reporting of defect streets, identifying in the streets condition survey rated at being in a fair condition in the infrastructure capital. President Kugler, this completes my presentation.
Thank you, Russell. You do appreciate all that. That's a lot to take in. What is next on? Okay, so we're going to open it up to questions of the board, and I see Trustee Gale with his hand up, so we'll start with you.
Thanks. I think it's a question for Director Mica. If I'm reading page 14 right, which is the table of the budget, am I reading that, at least in that first section of it, we have like $4.2 million of grants that we've received? Is that, is that correct? Is that, is that correct? Okay, so I think that's just fantastic that we've got, you know? Yeah, okay, so we've got over $4 million of grants that are coming our way, which is a testament to, I think, the staff and everybody's hard work on getting grants for us to fund our infrastructure. That was just something that caught my eye, so I think that was, I think that was my only question, President Kukler.
Thank you, Trustee Gell, and I think that's worth emphasizing again. It's really what we're trying to do is work with all of our partners, that's the MWRD, the county, the state, the federal government, for grants and to get as much of a cost share as we can for these projects. They're significant projects, million-dollar projects, we can't do it alone, and I appreciate the support that we've had from everybody in working to get those grants. Any other questions, comments? Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, President. About the price of the 50th Street Storm Sewer, it's always been 35 or 30. The price in here dropped down to 22 and a half, so I thought it was very good to bring up and reiterate for those citizens that are down in the South Basin that this is the cost of building the thing but not including the outfall. So this 22 and a half does not include the outfall into the quarry, so that additional cost will come in at a later point, which will jack it back up to that more higher price or higher since it'll be a different engineered process. So I think this is great that we've got money now going out on the table, being spent on this project. It's a start, it's nice to see that we do have some savings in the beginning and also adding some in-process storage along the way will be a huge help in that area, so I think this is great news that we're getting going on this project, and I appreciate the help on it, and just people will understand there's another bucket of money coming when we start going into the quarry, so, but just wanted to reiterate that. One last thing, I would, I talked to Director Davenport last week, just on the thermoplastic striping, just as one thing to consider would be to do inlaid striping, especially in our crosswalks, that's where you recess with a groover to lay the striping below the road surface, this would keep the plows from wearing it out so fast. You get a quote from the municipal process to see, is it cheaper to not have to relay them every year if we just inlay it and it'll last longer? And then maybe, I know Trustee Augustine had a question about some of our crosswalks being faded out if we switch to a wet bead reflective material, so at night they're seen much more clearly by motors, headlights light them up a lot better and provide better reflectivity. But I think it's worth looking at inlaying those stripes so we don't grind them off, that's what snowplows do, is remove the thermoplastic, but lay it below the surface and then put in some wet beads and make it more reflective, just as a cost option for future years. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson, and again, talking about the 50th Street Storm Sewer, that is also the litigation with the quarry. We are waiting for the appellate court, but we are moving ahead with that project, and we are working with MWRD on permitting as well as IDOT on permitting. So those are parallel tracks, we're not waiting for a decision, we're moving forward. And again, that is a project that we expect will be funded 50% by the MWRD, so that's great news. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. Two questions, possibly both for you, Russell, sorry I lied. I do have questions, but not really, just clarifications. One is for the north basage drainage area, the first matter on the, on the list here, where we were going to be rehabilitating the sewers in that north basin, which is that region, north of 47th, you know, majority of the village north of 47th to our northern border, which is essentially Ogden Avenue but a little north. Are we looking at sewer lining and point repairs? Are we looking at every block, block by block on this? Is that what this pays for?
Yes, it is. We will go through there with the television camera, and we'll just scope all the sewers and then wherever it needs point repairs, we'll take care of them, and then once we do the point repairs, we'll line everything.
Okay, good, because I know that takes a long time, and we do that periodically, you know, a few blocks a year, a few miles of blocks, some, not necessarily these repairs, but like the lining, and I know that doing this kind of work is lengthy, so I just wasn't sure if this accounted for that entire region, because that's a pretty massive block, so that's great.
Yeah, it does, and it's really preventative maintenance when you do sewer lining, then you don't have to dig it up, so it's great.
No, it's fantastic. And the other question I had was about the street patching program, which was new last year, I know you were a part of that, along with Colby. It seemed to have been a pretty big success, I know we got a couple of patches on my block, a couple of people complained to me saying it looks ugly and what are we doing, but I explained the cost savings and how we can't necessarily do certain streets because, you know, we're kind of trying to be economies of scale with waiting for when they're really in bad shape and at a stretch, and when the pipes underneath also need their repair, kind of a complicated formula, but I think this has gone well, and I've been looking at the condition of some of the areas. Would you say that it's, you know, exceeded expectations or met expectations? Is it, we're doing it again, so?
Yeah, I think it exceeded expectations and also met expectations. You would just go through different areas in town and identify where we had a spider cracks in the street that, you know, some of the streets that we're not going to do right away, so if we do this method with the grinding and resurfacing, it works well, and it lasts a long time.
Yeah, so much better than just a series of potholes that don't last, so.
Oh yeah, so we try to cover all that.
Glad to see us.
Thinking about grinding them.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine, and just to clarify, the north basin study does go to the northern border, which is usually Brewster. I do want to emphasize, although it's not in the capital budget plan, we do have money from Cook County for individuals to do work inside their home. The overhead sewers and the check valves can be done. We have funds available. That program is not indefinite. We do urge people that are interested to take advantage of that. It's basically a 50% cost share where the village, with the Cook County funds, will pay for 50% of the cost of an overhead sewer, which can prevent individuals from flooding. With that, without any other questioning, I don't think we move on any votes, that was just to inform the public, and seeing no other questions, we will then move along. Next up, I would ask Clerk Saladino to read the items under the Consent Agenda followed by those under Current Business.
Matters on the Consent Agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they already have been considered fully by the Board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the Consent Agenda to Current Business for separate consideration. Item A, a resolution approving an extension of a master service agreement with Sickich LLP for audit services. Item B, February 24, 2025 consolidated voucher. Item C, minutes of the Village Board of Lagrange of Trustees meeting, January 27, 2025. Current Business. This agenda item includes consideration of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, a resolution approving a task change order for Task Number 270 with Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for professional engineering services. And Item B, an ordinance approving a variation from the requirements for fences and corner side yards at 1426 Mason Drive.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. At this time, I'd invite the public up to comment on any matters on tonight's agenda, including the President's report or Village Manager Knight's report.
My name's John Pluto, I live at 718 East Avenue. I reviewed the agenda, and I found a few items on there that I didn't particularly care for, but you're going to vote on it tonight, and that's your business, but the one item that I've brought up was our water reservoir, and I still have no records of when the last test was done on that particular piece of infrastructure. And the sad part of that is, if we lose that reservoir, we should be maintaining it. If we lose it, we lose our whole water system. We can replace all the pumps and all the technical stuff in the buildings, but we need to maintain that reservoir. So my next is on the Resolution 270 for Baxter and Woodman, and what we've got there is, we don't have a transparency issue on this South Basin, and the unfortunate thing is, in Mr. Burke's Number 10 Task Force, he's supposed to do a, well, I'll read it for you, how's that? Because it's a joint agreement, and then it goes off to the village wanting their own Task Force 10 for Burke. And the unfortunate thing is, the original contract that you signed in 2023 in June, yes, June 12, 2023, and all the work was to be done by 61524, and it was in regards to the 50th Street sewer line. And it says, Task E, which is on the last page, it says, "This will include the attendance at public meetings, update the village website, and presentation preparation. CBBEL will work closely with village staff, including the village manager, Public Works Director, and Finance Director, to ensure coordination of this effort." Well, we're two years into this project, and when I look at our budget, the budget that we have here for the fiscal budget for capital funds projects, I look at the north basin, and we had a project done by Burke in 2023-24, and there's nothing on that line, it's blank all the way across. So I don't know what is going on there, but we did have things done in the north basin that we either got for free or somebody forgot to bill us. So when I take the south basin, I add up all the numbers going across there, and I come up with $2.3 million since 2022 to 2025. So we've paid almost $2.3 million for our south basin project, and we haven't gotten a word about what's going on. But now we get this change order, and the change order has a few things that I have questions on, and it's this quarry outfall alternative analysis. And I, I don't know if anybody up there can answer the question, why we're considering changing where the outfall is.
I don't believe we're necessarily changing the outfall.
Well, that's what it says here.
Okay.
Well, I'm just telling you what it's, what it says here, if you want me to read it for you, I could do that. amend the final design documents to include the bid options. Let's see. It says coordinate with Hanson Quarry to develop an optimal outfall solution. This scope of work will include three meetings with the village and Hanson Quarry and preparation for meeting minutes. Now that tells me that all of this work that's proposed on this next contract that we're signing off on today, which the price has gone from $447,759 to $741,000, so we've got about $300,000 more added on for the development of this new outfall. Is that to satisfy the quarry? I think that all of these items should be taken out and should be a line item if we're moving it for the quarry. It should be a line item, and the quarry should pick that tab up. Why should we pick it up? That 54, that 54-inch sewer coming out of there is ours. So before you go and approve this budget, are we going to be giving the quarry $300,000 to make their life easier? They surely haven't made our life much easier. Let's see where I got the last of it. So we need to get some transparency on this, because we, we see also in that plan that we are going down 12th Avenue now with some more engineering. So that tells me that we're getting a, maybe a water reservoir in the park, and I'm not sure if all the people in our neighborhood are crazy about water reservoirs, but I do see here that we're doing a whole bunch of core samples and for this moving of the quarry outfall. So I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for the quarry's problem. We dump it in there where it's at. And you can't answer what the, what that is? Nobody up here can tell me what, why that is on the proposal?
No, all I can, all I can tell you is, this board has been unified in taking on the quarry. It's been a huge, clear David versus Goliath fight. We've been successful, we continue to plan to be successful, and we are definitely, definitely watching out for the taxpayer's best interests. But that's all, I don't plan to get into details about anything more on it, so no, I'm not going to get into a question and answer. This has allowed the time for you to speak, it's supposed to be limited to three minutes. As always, I've allowed you to say whatever you want to say.
This is the transparency thing.
I understand your concerns.
Why don't we have a meeting before we put all of this stuff down here and ask the taxpayers what they think? We haven't had one meeting on flood control. Years ago, they had meetings before that. We haven't had one. We're two years into it, we spent $2.3 million, and we haven't had any transparency about what's going on on, on the south basin. The people over at the golf course, do they have problems with flooding? You bet they do. But you know what? I want a constructive plan because I don't want my backyard being a swamp.
I, I understand, and again, your suggestion that the, the solution with what I call the 50th Street Storm Sewer is somehow going to adversely impact any residents is just false. It's not going to. It is not going to adversely impact any residents. You can disagree, but that is what the engineers, we told the engineers, that whatever the project is, needs to be beneficial.
You know why we're here?
Why you are?
Because we've had poor engineering since the onslaught of this village. I've been here for 45 years, and I haven't seen any improvement. There hasn't been any improvement in any of our drainage problems.
Well, I certainly hope that's changing soon.
I don't expect it. I'll think I'll move first.
Seeing no other public comments, I would ask for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Any comments on the Consent Agenda?
Thank you, President Kukler. As previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to our village prosecutor.
Seeing no other comments, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Gell?
Aye.
And that passes. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to current business. Under A's, the resolution approving a task change order for Task Number 270 with Baxter and Woodman for Professional Engineering Services. And I would invite Trustee McGee to provide an overview of this item.
Thank you, President Kukler. Resolution approving a task change order for Task Number 270 with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services. In July of last year, the village was provided notification of an award of $2 million in State of Illinois grant funding for flood mitigation. A portion of this funding, $1 million, is administered through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Economic Development, and Public Safety Grant Program. The grant is available on the state's fiscal year, which began July 1st, 2024, and concludes June 30th of 2025. As DCEO grant terms dictate expenditure of the funds with this year's state fiscal year, funds provided through the grant will be applied towards flood mitigation efforts in the villages, North and South Basins, and will serve to offset public safety salaries in accordance with grant terms. Savings derived from offsetting public safety salaries will in turn be reinvested in ongoing flood mitigation efforts. The proposed Task Change Order 270 from Baxter and Woodman Incorporated amends the previously approved Tax Order 270 to more accurately reflect current project needs and includes revisions to design drawings to address a variety of project considerations, including replacement of water main, evaluation of green infrastructure, development of an aggregate storage bid alternative, providing an analysis on outfall construction and design, and a variety of additional technical services. Expenditures associated with this task order are reimbursable through the Economic Development and Public Safety Grant Program. Staff recommends approval of the proposed resolution approving a task change order for Task Number 270 with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services. And I move that this proposal to approve the tax change order for Task 270 be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee McGee. Trustee Peterson. Any discussion regarding this item? Trustee Gale, sorry.
That's all right, President Kukler. I didn't really have any questions. Just a couple of comments. I noted in going through it, I noted that there's going to be some green infrastructure analysis, which is something I think I like and I'm glad to see because I think some of those intermediate infrastructure projects are the things we can do now while we're waiting for, you know, the 50th Storm Street Sewer to get in place. And then I like that we're also analyzing the stormwater storage under the roads as well. And I think looking at our interim director and just make sure we, you know, make sure we keep our eye on those and have those programs get in place when we can. So I just wanted to comment on those because I thought those are some good intermediate type of steps we can take for flooding relief.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Seeing no other comments, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is an ordinance approving a variation from the requirements for fences in the corner side yard at 1426 Mason Drive. And I would invite Trustee Peterson to provide an overview of this item.
Peter K. Berg and Martha Flores Berg, the applicants, are the owners of the property at 1426 Mason Drive, the subject property, and have applied for a variation to construct a six-foot privacy fence along the corner side lot line of the subject property. For Section 9-105-D-2 of the zoning code, fences along a corner side lot line are limited to 3 1/2 feet in height from the rear of the principal building to the front building line, from the rear corner of the home to the rear lot line. The maximum height is 6 feet. Zoning code, Section 14-303E1-5. Authorized variation allows the increase of maximum allowable height and location of any fence. On July 30, 2025, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on the application. The applicant testified about the high pedestrian and vehicular traffic volumes near their home and how the proposed fence would provide privacy and minimize littering on their property. No other residents spoke at the hearing. The ZBA discussed the application and noted the uniqueness of the subject property's location on a high-traffic road. That's Gilbert Willis Springs Road, surrounded by three sides of non-residential or quasi-residential uses. They also noted the unique topography of the property. The ZBA voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the proposed variation. Due to the ZBA's vote and the recent adoption of the comprehensive plan, a vote of 2/3 of the corporate authorities, the board, is required to approve the variation. So I move that we approve the variation to zoning code.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson and Trustee McGee. With that, I would open it up to any questions. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. This board takes our fence heights, especially in corner lots, very seriously. I feel like this is the thing I've seen the most as a trustee over the years. And we approve some and not others, and I think for good reasons. This one, to me, seems clear-cut, which is why the ZBA came to a 6-0 vote on that. And that's also fairly rare, as stated by Trustee Peterson, a very unique location. And we've made similar variances for homes on this particular stretch near the high school hospital. So it just makes sense to me, and I was glad to see the ZBA came to this conclusion, and I would support.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Seeing no other trustee comments, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
And that matter passes unanimously. Moving on, we are done with current business. Moving on to public comments regarding matters not on tonight's agenda.
My name is John Pluto. I live at 718 East Avenue. I want to comment on what the Park District is planning to do at Sedgwick Park. And we have some issues there because I've sent FOIA's out for the inner sewer structure within the park. The village has no copies, no records of it, and the Park District has no records of it. Now, at the 48th Street parking lot, there's two catch basins there. And I believe those two catch basins run back out to 10th Avenue and cause problems for those people on 10th Avenue. And when I talk to the people at the Park District, they say, "Well, that's the way it is." And I said, "Well, what about making that lot permeable pavers?" And they said, "Well, that's too expensive. We can't do that." But what is the village's input on trying to help that area out with flooding relief and somehow getting them involved into these permeable paver lots? And it wouldn't hurt on 49th Street because all of the sewers that are over there, and there's five catch basins by the baseball fields, that all run into that 42-inch combination sewer that causes backups in the 5th and 4th and all the way up to La Grange Road. It would sure be nice if we could take some of the water off of that sewer and maybe help those people out in those depressions. I don't know what your feelings are on it, but I think that the village should help the Park District out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pluto. We work very well with the Park District. We do work together on supporting each other on different grant fundings. And every once in a while, there is grant funding for permeable pavers and things like that. And we'll continue to work with the Park District in any way possible for them to secure their funding. That would allow that to occur. As Trustee Gale said, you know, we are studying. We continue to study green projects. We do take the attitude of every bit helps. So although this permeable paver lot won't solve the flooding, it helps. And that's why we've invested the money in the past, and we'll continue to do so. With that, and seeing no other comments, I would ask trustees for any comments. Nope. Al, please come on up.
Good evening. Al Foreman, 56 Seventh Avenue in La Grange. This is just kind of a general broad topic. As you talk about budgeting and planning. I'm a big fan of, you know, like dashboard statistics or fact sheets. And I think you guys are doing an awesome job with all the details. And as some of you know, I can get into the details. But I think we need to find a way to make it more consumable for our residents. And I would say, you know, just using the flooding issues, I can imagine most residents just want to know, "When's it going to get done?" So I can envision a chart that just shows maybe a multi-year timeline. And here's where we're at. And here's the risks. And here's how much money we've got in the bank. And here's how much has been promised to us. And we're crossing our fingers in today's environment about whether that will be delivered, right? So, and therefore, folks don't have the time or the expertise or the interest to understand it from end to end. But again, key words for me would be like dashboard statistics. And there's several major projects, but kind of like a timeline and just some fun facts. Whether that could be put on the website or circulated in a newsletter, I would love to see that. So that's my comment. And then switching to topic two, maybe a question for Charity. Just kind of curious about where we're at timelines on moving towards upgrading the zoning requirements post comprehensive plan?
Charity, sure. Go ahead and answer if you can.
Sure, absolutely. So we've budgeted for a consultant for a zoning code rewrite. We're currently in the process of contacting some other communities and getting examples of their requests for proposals, which is the first step in selecting a consultant to then begin the work. We also recently received grant funding from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning for the South La Grange Road corridor studies. So we're trying to balance those two efforts so as not to just inundate the public with planning engagement opportunities all at once.
Okay, great. Well, thanks in advance for all that work. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, for your ideas and in your review of the budgeting. We do appreciate your ideas. Thank you. Now, not seeing any other public comments, I would ask if there's any trustee comments. Trustee Augustine.
Anybody else before I go? Anybody else?
You can go.
Okay. I got a few. So one. I meant to do this last week, and I got sidetracked by saying some other things. But I'm on the board of the Historical Society, La Grange Area Historical Society, and we're in our last week of a really great event. And you can show up during their hours of Wednesday, 9:00 to 12:00, and Thursday through Saturday, 11:00 to 2:00 P.M. and see a great event for Black History Month. And in particular, we have Bernadine Sims' Family Memorabilia and Art Collection on display right now. It's a wonderful exhibit. So if you haven't been there, please go. It's a really special exhibit for a family who's been here since the beginning. Second thing I wanted to say is, and it plays off a little bit of what Mr. Foreman was talking about. I noticed today, and I've noticed it for a while now, the village board doesn't host our meetings on Facebook. We have a Facebook page. It's not really ours. We kind of share it with area entities. I've long encouraged that we get our own Facebook page, like it or not. It's where most people go for local information. And our neighboring towns do a very good job posting anything from, you know, meeting notices to water main breaks, emergencies, police and fire, things like that. So I'd really like to encourage that we do that because people don't know where to go to find local information. And again, there was no notice anywhere that I know of with this meeting tonight posted. So I sometimes post it, but I forget from time to time. And I don't have a lot of reach. I don't really push that. So we're not, you know, I think people would like more information and a way to know, a place to go that they can rely on. And I'd really like to encourage the board to very much consider doing that in this year. And the third thing is kind of along these lines, but you know, really more a reaction to Mr. Pluto and his visits here. I think a lot of this hopefully could be addressed, if it's possible, with part of our meeting being dedicated to the community that would see this 50th Street plan. Now, I know that in the past, we've been careful to discuss it because of our pending litigation, and that may still be the case, so maybe we can't. But would there be a way in a near-future meeting for us to host the neighborhood and be able to take some questions and describe a little bit more about what we're planning to do so that there doesn't seem to be a transparency issue and there doesn't seem to be a lack of us trying to inform them and trying to communicate as clearly as we can?
Yeah, I'm just not sure how much more communication we can do. I mean, if you're aware of something that isn't being shared, that's not purposeful. We have litigation. We're waiting for the appellate court to rule or set it for oral argument. We've said that. We can't say anything more than that. That's what's going on. We have applied for permitting. Again, until today, that we're working with the MWRD and their permitting process, and IDOT and their permitting process. So those are the two things. You know, whenever we meet with MWRD and it's appropriate, we just, you know, informally make sure that they're still on board with 50% of the cost, which is necessary for this project to ever be completed. But that's really where we're at with the 50th Street project.
Yeah, but that leaves it still fairly vague. And I know that we, from time to time, ask for refreshers. So, you know, I think that there are details, if we're okay with that, that we could share. We can walk through some of it. We can answer the questions about whether we are or are not considering burying anything. And, you know, whatever we'd be able to talk about, I think we're going to get questions. They're going to cause us potentially to put forth some information that maybe we assumed they knew. I don't know how many, I think our website does a pretty good job of relaying some of this information. But, I mean, it's just an opportunity for them to come and ask some questions and give a little more detail.
Yeah, sure. Maybe we can talk, and if we can figure out something that hasn't been communicated, and you think having somebody ask the question versus us just communicating it, I'm not against that. I'm just, again, I'm not aware of what we could communicate at this juncture that hasn't been communicated. But I'm more than happy to have you either meet with Russell, Jack, or myself. And if you hear anything that should be communicated, we can do it however you prefer.
Great. I'll do that.
Thanks. And then addressing your item number two, the Facebook. I do think our communication is important. I do believe that in the March budgeting meeting, that one of the items that will be discussed is something along those lines to assist in communication, continuing to assist in communication. But I do think it's important that we talk, at least for a second, and staff would probably be the ones to say it, of how do we communicate what's on all of our meeting agendas? Can somebody?
Yeah, I could take a swing just briefly. So we do have the portal that was new, you know, with the legislative software that we introduced called Diligent that is available on the village's website. That's where our agendas are posted. We do have links to the YouTube channel that the village's videos do show on. So people can visit there and access video just as they would through the Facebook link. So those are a couple of different ways that people could stay informed. We also have a newsflash. So when we post news to our web- So when we post news to our website, it'll show there on the website. Anyone that's subscribed there will get a notification that information exists on the website there, too. So we do make an earnest effort to communicate with the public. We would like to improve that and embellish it as best we can. And so for the upcoming proposed operations budget that we'll discuss on March 8th, we'll have a solution there to talk about and to present to the board.
Would that include emails going out? Like if you signed up for a village alert? We don't do that now.
That is available through the website. We'll continue to leverage that functionality. You know, we could also explore social media aspects of what we might arrange for, and so that's kind of the heart of what we're looking at in terms of supporting our communication needs.
Right. So I, I thought that we did, I, maybe I get them as a board meeting, but I get emails saying we have a board meeting.
Yep.
This is the agenda.
Yep. So we have that through the portal, so the Diligent portals where you'll get notifications about village board agendas.
But can a resident sign up for that?
Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear. You can sign up to get an email about the meeting's agenda and know what every board meeting we're having's agenda is.
Yep.
All right. Any other trustee comments? Trustee Thompson?
Thank you, President Kukler. Kind of along what Trustee Augustine was talking about. And I think once this new Baxter and Woodman study, this amended study's completed, I think it would be, be good to have them come back in because this is a variation of the original plan. So if we're going to drop off lateral one, we're changing all those lateral, the 12th Street Avenue lateral has been bid since 2016, so there's nothing new. But if they're going to do other adaptive storage or green, I think it would be good to have Baxter and Woodman come in and present the, what is now the 50th Street Storm Sewer, what it would look like and how it would work. Obviously, the outflow and outfall is something that's going to be negotiated back and forth with the quarry on how they, and that's really a rebuild of the broken pipe that's collapsing there that needs to be upgraded. So I understand why they're doing that. But just so that's communicated to the residents, so that there is an update, because we did have Baxter and Woodman here last year, came in and gave an update. So this would be a change that, update that. So I think that would be good. And then one last thing, it was a conversation that came up over the weekend on Facebook and drew a lot of activity with the citizens, but the signage across Walgreens and the unusable store space, I guess we would call it, and then the sign across the street. When was the last time we updated that for where it says Vibrant? Were they ever thinking about updating that more often and maybe use it as a way to communicate to the village?
So the Walgreens alcove, I would say it's probably been in place for a couple of years. The CDC's recommended different designs over the years, so we could certainly bring that back to them to do a refresh of that design. The kiosks themselves, you know, the one side is sort of the business directory map of the downtown. The other side, we have used those vibrants with the QR code and just colorful images of, you know, dining and shopping options, and it directs to the La Grange Events webpage on that LGBA site. Most of the year now, though, those are occupied by the LGBA's event dates, but they don't have those for 2025 out yet. So those will be coming in the spring, and then that's what'll fill that side of the kiosk. That will be, that's what we did last year. So what you see up there currently is the displays aren't up there year-round.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson. Seeing no other trustee comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion, the meeting is adjourned at 8:45.